All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council president, everyone is here, and if you will stand, our Missouri City Fire and Rescue Service Department honor guard will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and post our colors.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three on the agenda, item 3A is the administration of the oath of office to Councilwoman Ford, Councilman Don Smith, newly elected Councilman Andy Morales, and Floyd, Councilman Floyd Emery. So, I know Judge Champagne's gonna do three, and then Mary's gonna do one. So, the three that Judge Champagne's gonna do will go out here. Look sharp, brother.
That's how you should look every day. That's how you should look every day.
I got something for you. You're not here, then you can't. Yeah. He has a 20-minute speech. Right? Tell me you had a 20-minute speech.
Well, I talked him early. He told me he had an hour and a half.
Now, that's Don.
The State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution. And laws of the United States. And of this state. So help me God. Sign here. Go get this right, this time.
Okay, right there.
Right here.
That it?
That's it. You are official. And then Captain Emery. We saved a death for last, I suppose. That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Missouri City Councilmember District D. Of the office of Missouri City Councilmember District D. Of the State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve. Protect. And defend. The Constitution. And laws of the United States. And of this state. So help me God. Great. Have him sign here. And you are good. That's it. Thank you. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Tish. Come on.
You want the girls with you?
Why, you can stand in the picture.
Get the girls up there, too.
Get the girls. You stay with them. Just stay with them.
With him?
Yeah.
But you don't have to take the oath.
Right.
You don't have to take the oath.
You're gonna help him with the oath.
Hi. City Councilmember District C. And of the State of Texas. And will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States. And of this state. So help me God.
I think we need to get them all around her.
Anthony.
You wanna say something?
One, two.
You saying goodbye?
He's ours.
I'm off homework duty now.
He's ours now.
You get a chance to sit up here now.
Anthony. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, and I look forward to serving the community. I'm really excited. I've already spent some time with the staff. I'm very impressed with the staff, the chief, and everybody that works in this city. They do an outstanding job, and I look forward to supporting them. District C's a great little district in this town. I'm super proud to represent it, and I'm very honored to take the responsibility from Robin, who's done an outstanding job representing his constituents. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say thank you to all my constituents who came out to support me. Again, we had a absolutely fabulous turnout. I know a lot of people are taking pictures, so we're gonna do a really quick photo op up here as soon as everyone gets a chance to make comments. So, please feel free to come up if you want to take pictures with us. And once again, I want to say thank you, guys, for coming out to support me for this election. Thank you.
Mayor and council, if you don't mind me suspending the rules, I like to save my comments until the comment portion of council. But I do want to thank everyone who supported this election. It was, I like to think it was long and drawn out. I'm certainly glad it's over with. And I appreciate those who had the confidence in me and to elect me to this next two-year term. I really appreciate that. I look forward to working with my colleagues and then also moving Missouri City forward to make sure it maintains its status as the great city that it is. Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank also, I have a number of constituents that are here, and even though I didn't have an opponent and I did not have to run for election, I appreciate the support that they've given me over the last two years. I hope that I'll be able to live up to their expectations. We have a lot of work in front of us to do, and we need to have a real cohesive group of council folks, and I think we have that. So, I look forward to another two years of serving with my colleagues and for the benefit and the best interest of Missouri City. So, thank you.
One, two. One, two. Very good.
You gotta direct us. We're ready.
Is this your spouse?
This is my spouse.
Come on in, spouse.
That's not a spouse, that's a better half.
It's Trish.
One, two.
We married.
That'd be great.
Now, it's light switch. Light switch, one. Good, thank you.
Have to have a gentleman protect those ladies.
Right here. One more.
Mayor, you want to get in with?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, why don't you get in there? Why don't you get in there, Mr. Mayor?
I'll get here.
One and two. One more, one, two. One with the sign.
He's got some personality.
Very good. Welcome back and welcome aboard to those.
I guess I'll get back up.
Come over here, Robin. I have a proclamation that says that whereas Robin Alocat has served this community well for many years in numerous capacities, including election to three terms on City Council, and whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, and he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development, and whereas Robin Alocat has earned that admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and the affection of many citizens, and whereas his performance of the duties and responsibilities as a member of City Council and recently as a mayor pro temp has been characterized by excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, may err on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Robin for his service to the city of Missouri City. Robin? Thank you. And as soon as Robin gets through talking, he's got a rocking chair he gets to sit in, because this is his guilt.
Okay. Jerry really want me to give a speech, so I wrote one. First and foremost, good evening, and thank you all for coming to wish all the council members that are elected, and also to those that came from District C, including my family who's here. First and foremost, I want to thank the citizens. Not only the citizens in District C, but the citizens in Missouri City in general. I had the opportunity to get elected in 2009, which was, you know, as most of you know, myself being an immigrant has been an honor for me to have that position for this long. My family, Tina's here, my two kids. I first ran for office when my little one was six months, and then my older one was three. Today, they're 10 and 7. They're here. As I was telling my oldest daughter, Leah, that I'm leaving, she said, "Well, you're not gonna be on City Council, but I'm on Student Council." So, we do have some egos at home. Also, to my colleagues who are up here. Every day we come here, we argue it out, we make decisions that are on behalf of the citizens. Not all the decisions that I made, I'm probably are proud of, but there were definitely several decisions that were made that was the good of the city and the entire citizens. I cannot forget some of the past council members that I had the pleasure to serve with, Cynthia Langary, Buddy Jimmerson, Brett Calaya, Danny Nguyen, and if I'm missing anybody, I do apologize. But from everyone, I did learn something. I learned the most from Councilmember Wyatt. And I say that not as a joke, but I used to sit on that side. After two years into my council, I told the mayor, "I want to move to that side." But in all honesty, that I did. Jerry's been there as a mentor, but most often, most of you know that we disagreed, but we agreed to disagree. And he has a great knowledge, and I did enjoy working with him, and I said the same thing to Anthony. I said, "You'll have fun, just make sure that don't sit next to Jerry." To staff, especially our fire, fire department, I saw Chief Sanders here, Public Works, that was led by Scott Elmer and as well as Sharon and others, Parks and Communication Department. Everyone did a great job, and throughout my years, six years here, I especially enjoyed working with each of them. I left the police out because I want to say something about them in on its own. As most of you know that what's happening in the country today, you see that the police, especially the police department, are being scrutinized with everything that they go through on a daily basis that you see. I do want everyone that's here today to recognize our men and women who wear the blue. They do come out and protect and preserve. They're not sure if they're gonna go back home, but they're out there each and every day making sure that you and I, along with the staff and the council members up here and the citizens, are protected, and they do it without being selfish. And please give them a round of applause. Lastly, to District C, so I'm gonna leave everything with Anthony. So, he's got the keys, and I will be around. I'm not moving out of Missouri City. Someone asked me if I'm moving to Sugarland, I said never. But I'll be in Missouri City. Anthony will do a great job, and I know that he has a passion just as much as I do, probably even more to a point. I've known him for a long time, and I cannot think of anyone else to represent that district. So, he will be a great asset, along with his wife, Tish, and his kids. Lastly, to the citizens, you know, we talk about, every day at the City Council, there's always an issue or there's always something that somebody's mad about, as Councilmember Smith would always say. But I ask the citizens, be that, be the change that you wish to see. Get involved, and come to City Council meetings and take part in those discussions, whether it's a debate or whether any of those issues. Because at the end of the day, the men and the women that are working back there, up there, are representing you, and they need directions and guidance from you and each one of you. One, and I'm gonna end it, Mayor, by just one few thanks to Councilmember Floyd Emery, Councilmember Preston, and Councilmember Ford. In 2014, we've gone through a huge mayor pro temp ordeal, and both times allowing them to throw in their support for me and end it in that six years as leaving as a mayor pro temp. So, I do appreciate and thank each and every one of you for your support and for your vote. So, I know Tina's got a list that's longer than this for me to do, and I'm going to, I will be coming to the meeting at times, just to see what everybody else is doing. But thank you, thank you to staff, thank you to the city manager that's sat in those seats before, and Bill, really appreciate your help, and God bless you, God bless Missouri City. Thank you.
Get your family up there. Get your wife and children up here, I want a picture of them.
So, before the rest of the folks recognize Robin, we took the time to put together a small gift for you. We have Jim White and David here tonight. For all the hard work you put in in the city for representing everybody in this district, for your focus on infrastructure, sidewalks, especially for David, you made a huge impact. So, David has a small gift for you that I'll let him give to you.
Robin, you don't know how much, what a difference it's made in his life to be able to go out and be independent, having sidewalks, and you can actually roll over with this wheelchair. It's made a big difference in his life. Thank you.
So, is the letter C? It's made out of concrete?
I'm definitely hanging this.
Street sign. One, two. I'll take that later. You don't even tell them.
Do you have a? Should we name the Alocat? What do you do now? Public Works. I don't know where you gonna put it, but...
We're not gonna install the pole, though.
We're gonna put it on the side of your house.
Can you give me the chair? You gave me the street sign. I got the sidewalks.
What else do you need, right?
Thank you.
See you later, brother.
Bye, bud. Good luck, man. I'll keep the sea hot.
I'll take it easy. I'll put you to work early, son. This ain't no freeloader job. All right, this next proclamation, where's Mary? Come on up here, Mary. This next proclamation, and where are my firefighters? Get my firefighters up here. I said, "Mary Ann." All right. Whereas on January the 7th, 2013, Ann McCormick Sullivan began her career as a cadet in the Houston Fire Department Val Janky Training Facility as a member of Class 2013A. She excelled at most endeavors and took on challenges with a sheer determined effort. It was said of Cadet Sullivan by her instructors that after her five-foot-two-inch frame, one inch of it was heart, and she never quits. Whereas Ann was a living example of a strong work ethic, she knew the value of building a good reputation and taking pride in her work. In every training evaluation, Cadet Sullivan stood out from others because she wanted to be the best. No outside motivation from instructors was needed. And whereas firefighter Sullivan bravely died in the line of duty on May 31st of 2013, you all remember the five-alarm Southwest End Fire, along with three fellow Houston firefighters, and a roof collapse. And whereas in her short tenure, Ann left a legacy of work, dedication, and excellence for the Houston Fire Department. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Allen Owen, may err on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim May 31st, 2015, as Ann McCormick Sullivan Day, and let us remember all of our fire and emergency personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community, and to pay respect to the survivors that are fallen heroes.
Thank you. They're all here to support you. Thank you. I wasn't expecting this, and quite an honor for my daughter. May 28th, we closed on our house in Missouri City, moving all the way from Sugarland, and moved up to Missouri City. And on the 28th, I'd closed on the house, and I was moving into it with my two daughters, Ann and Kate. And Ann, just like a kid, was like, "Let's go look at the new house." So, we decided we were gonna do a drive-by, because we had just closed on the house. And we drove up to our new house, and happens to be next door to Anthony, and her two daughters, their two daughters, Laney and Melanie, were out playing volleyball. And Ann's like, "Oh, no, these are gonna be soccer girls." And, you know, it was her intent to get them to play the game of soccer. And it meant so much to me that Ann actually saw who my wonderful neighbors are now, even though she's not here, and that she got to see the house that she was gonna live in. So, that means so much to me, to be in such a warm and inviting neighborhood. Last Mother's Day, which was my first Mother's Day without Ann, Anthony and his wife, Tish, took up a neighborhood collection for flowers and gift certificate for my first Mother's Day. And it wasn't easy, but it sure made it a lot, a lot easier and a lot better to get through a day without Ann, when you know that people are thinking of you. So, I'm very happy and proud to be a Missouri City resident, and I thank you so much for remembering my daughter, Ann. Thank you so much.
The Morales family, especially, happy to have her as a neighbor. It's just... Do you have, do you have a, street name delicate? What do you do now? Public works good everywhere. I don't know where you're gonna put it, but, uh...
We're not gonna install the pole, though.
We're gonna put it on the side of your house.
Can you give me the chair? You gave me the street sign.
You got it.
I got the sidewalks.
You got it. What else do you need, right?
Thank you.
See you later, brother.
Bye, bud.
Good luck, man.
I'll keep the C hot.
I'll set his truck to take all that stuff home. I'll take the new.
I know, man, I'm glad I'm on this side.
I'll put you to work early, son. This ain't no free loader job. All right, this next proclamation, where's Mary? Come on up here, Mary. This next proclamation, and where are my firefighters? Get my firefighters up here. I said Mary Ann. All right. Whereas on January the 7th, 2013, Anne McCormick Sullivan began her career as a cadet in the Houston Fire Department Val Jankie Training Facility as a member of Class 2013A. She excelled at most endeavors and took on challenges with a sheer determined effort. It was said of Cadet Sullivan by her instructors that after her five-foot-two-inch frame, uh, one inch of it was heart and she never quits. Whereas Anne was a living example of a strong work ethic, she knew the value of building a good reputation and taking pride in her work. In every training evaluation, Cadet Sullivan stood out from others because she wanted to be the best. No outside motivation from instructors was needed. And whereas firefighter Sullivan bravely died in the line of duty on May the 31st of 2013, you all remember the five-alarm Southwest End Fire along with three fellow Houston firefighters and a roof collapse. And whereas in her short tenure, Anne left a legacy of work, dedication, and excellence for the Houston Fire Department. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Alano, and Mayor, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim May 31st, 2015, as Anne McCormick Sullivan Day, and let us remember all of our fire and emergency personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and to pay respect to the survivors that are fallen heroes.
Thank you so much.
They guys are all here to support you.
Thank you. Um, I, um, I wasn't expecting this, Anne, quite an honor for my daughter. May 28th, we closed on our house in Missouri City, moving all the way from Sugar Land. Uh, and moved up to Missouri City. And on the 28th, I'd closed on the house and I was moving into it with my two daughters, Anne and Kate. And Anne, just like a kid, was like, "Let's go look at the new house." So we decided we were gonna do a drive-by, 'cause we had just closed on the house. And we drove up to our new house and happens to be next door to Anthony. And her two dau, uh, their two daughters, Laney and Melanie, were out playing volleyball. And Anne's like, "Oh, no, these are gonna be soccer girls." And, you know, it was her, her intent to, to get them to play the game of soccer. And it meant so much to me that Anne actually saw who my wonderful neighbors are now, even though she's not here. And that she got to see the house that she was gonna live in. So that means so much to me, uh, to be in such a warm and inviting neighborhood. Last Mother's Day, which was my first Mother's Day without Anne, Anthony and his wife Tish took up a neighborhood collection, uh, for flowers and gift certificate for my first Mother's Day. And it wasn't easy, but it sure made it a lot, a lot easier and a lot better to get through a day without Anne, when you know that people are thinking of you. So, um, I'm very happy and proud to be a Missouri City resident, and I thank you so much for remembering my daughter, Anne. Thank you so much.
Now, Anne, um, the Marilla's family, especially you're happy to have her as a neighbor, uh, it's just an honor to be next to a person. And when we say those who sacrificed their lives, she's, her daughter did that. So anyway, we love you, we thank you, and we're proud to be a Missouri City District C resident.
I did not have the opportunity to, to meet Anne. However, talking to Chief DeCamello, Stafford Fire Chief, who did know him, know her, and actually worked her, with her at the station at Houston, learned through her and also through, through your video, through the National Fire and Firefighters Foundation honoring a hero and learning a little bit about Anne. And I think the important thing is, is that across the nation, less than 5% of the fire service are females. And there's a foundation, the Anne McCormick Sullivan Foundation, whose goal is to actually help young ladies become firefighters throughout this. It's a great career and it gives them the opportunity and help them to actually become a firefighter. Website is AMSfoundation.com. If you're so inclined, please take time to donate a little money to help some young lady become a firefighter and reach that dream. So thank you.
Anybody know what June 1st begins? Unfortunately begins hurricane season. But anyway, this proclamation says that whereas Texas hurricane season officially begins June 1st and ends November 30th. Doesn't seem like it was that long ago. And whereas the National Weather Service and the Governor's Division of Emergency Management are designating the week of May 24th through May 30th, 2015, as Hurricane Awareness Week in Texas. And whereas the 624-mile Texas Gulf Coastline areas of Texas, hundreds of miles inland, and our area in particular, are vulnerable to the devastating effects of a hurricane or tropical storm, including heavy rainfall, inland flooding, high winds, tornadoes, and storm surges. And whereas the threat of life and the year-by-year increasing property damage from the destructive forces of hurricane and coastal flooding can be reduced dramatically by careful planning and timely implementation of emergency response and evacuation plans. And whereas the best defense is preparedness and public education about the dangers of high winds, storm surge, flooding, and tornadoes that may occur for hundreds of miles in conjunction with a hurricane or tropical storm. So now therefore I, Alano, and on behalf of the Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim May the 24th through the 30th, 2015, as Hurricane Awareness Week in the city of Missouri City. And I urge all the citizens of Fort Bend County, Harris County, and this community in particular to participate in hurricane preparedness activities and to pay close attention to any warning instructions. And we have Judy LaFevere here who runs our emergency management center. And, and let me just say that, you know, every year we get closer and closer to having more and more storms and we don't need another IC. Uh, but let me just tell you that this city is well-prepared. We go through training exercises constantly to prepare for this. Judy's in charge of all of that, so that if it does happen, our, our people know what to do. And we, we go to that command center, all of us. And IC, we were there 72 straight hours. We didn't see our own homes, we didn't know what was going on. But we're there to make sure that the citizens do it. But the citizens need to prepare themselves. The citizens need to make sure that they have the supplies on hand, that they don't wait until the last minute like they were doing when the gas stations were not there, when the food stations were not there, there was no ice, there was none of that stuff. Do it early. Make sure that you've got an evacuation plan. And when I, as that chief person tells you to evacuate, leave. I can tell you right now that most of Missouri City is not designed, those homes are old enough that there are no hurricane straps on those roofs. And a 60 mile, I mean, a 160 mile an hour wind or even less than that will roof, will rip the roof off your house and you inside it. So when we make that decision for this city to evacuate, you may evacuate safely knowing that the rest of us are gonna be here under martial law, making sure that your homes and your properties are protected. But don't be a casualty in this. Don't be a hero, because unfortunately, when we had those bad experiences with people stuck on the highway with no gas and no water and all of that stuff before, the comments that I had made to me after that was, "Next time, I'm gonna stay at home." Don't do that. When I tell you that it's time to leave, you need to leave because we know what's best for you. So Judy?
If you can make some comments, I'll give us to you.
Good evening. Thank you. As the mayor said, obviously, June 1st begins the 2015 hurricane season. Thankfully, we have not had to weather a storm in quite a few years, but, but that's no reason not to be prepared. It's my job to, to make sure that we are prepared, and the city is, is routinely working through those preparedness actions, as the mayor said, with training and exercises. So tonight, what I'd like to do is encourage you as individuals, as families, as business owners here in Missouri City, to please take the time in this, in this next week or so and, and prepare yourselves, prepare your homes, make sure that, that you too are ready, because that will definitely aid us in helping the city recover. I'd like to encourage you also, if you're not familiar with it, to visit the city's preparedness website. The website address is missouricityready.com. You can always find information there. And also on your way out this evening, there are some preparedness packets put together. Please help yourselves. I hope that that information's helpful. Thank you.
Very good, Stacy.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, gonna come up. I'd like to invite my team to join me up here, please. It is my distinct honor, oh, I'm sorry, we're waiting, one more person. It is my distinct honor tonight to announce that the Communications Department has won four international awards. They're called the Communicator Awards. We've earned four 2015 Silver Awards of Distinction, one for Best Government Website, one for Missouri City Facebook, Best Social Media, one for Missouri City in the News, Best Film Video, and one for our Missouri City YouTube Page, which was redesigned last year for Best Online Video Variety. The Communicator Awards is the leading international awards program which recognizes big ideas in marketing and communications. It was founded two decades ago, and the award receives, receives more than 6,000 entries from companies and agencies of all sizes, making it one of the largest awards of its kind in the world. This is our first year applying, and we're very proud that we've won. The award is in its 21st season and honors work that transcends innovation and craft. The Award of Distinction is presented for projects that exceed industry standards in quality and achievement, and is sanctioned and judged by the Academy of Interactive and Visual Arts, which is an invitation only group consisting of top peer professionals from acclaimed media, communications, advertising, creative, and marketing firms. Members of the group include executives from Conde Nast, Disney, Lockheed Martin, MTV, Pitney Bose, The Ellen Degeneres Show, Estee Lauder, Yahoo, Time Incorporated, Sotheby's, and other leading organizations. So this talented team of creative and very educated people is responsible for this, and I'm very, very pleased to be a part of this team. So congratulations. Before they leave, one of us was unable to attend tonight, Methu Callum-Kutil. And I just wanna recognize Methu, she's been a big reason why our social media, Facebook page, Twitter, Instagram have been successful. And I didn't ask, did y'all wanna say anything? Okay, great work. Keep it up.
Stacy, Stacy.
I'm sorry, I meant to do that. Very good, okay. So from my right, this is Heather Daniels, she's our social media web manager. Uh, she also does a lot of design, the banners that you see in the lobby, you know, all of the design work she does for the city in addition. This is Adriana Nixon, she's one of our communications specialists, but she's also responsible for a lot of the events planning that you see, including Citizens University and the Leadership Luncheon. This is Clifford McBean, who I'm gonna embarrass a little bit. Clifford McBean is our MCTV producer, but Clifford has worked for network television, he's worked in the film industry, and we're very, very fortunate to have him here. Uh, this is Kroy Stottermeyer, who is an award-winning journalist. He went to the top journalism school in the country. He also does a lot of social media, and he's manager of the municipal volunteers program. This Kelly Mott, she's our new community relations coordinator, and we're fortunate to have her on board. And this is Douglas Pinyalba, who is also an award-winning producer and produces Missouri City Minute. He's also our face for in the news, which we run for, and he does a lot of other video projects. So we're very fortunate to have them.
Very good, thank you, Stacy. You got a great team. Right, item four, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address council on any issue that's not an agenda item. And I would say that Bruce Ambroski is up.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Yolanda on her reelection.
Thank you.
She had a stunning victory, and the reason why Yolanda was voted in is because she listens to the people of Missouri City. Apparently, the rest of the people in council don't listen to Missouri City. We have an issue in Fon Meadow with a simple pedestrian bridge that everybody likes to keep on kicking down the road. Missouri City does nice improvements in all other parts of the city, but neglect our district and especially Fon Meadow. We have no city park, our subdivision maintains the playground equipment there. I see other parts of Missouri City with nice little parkettes that are maintained by Missouri City. I think it's about time that council addresses the issue of the Fon Meadow Bridge and quick kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five are staff reports. I have, it's not a staff report, but I'd like to pass this letter to each of the council people. I was fortunate enough this morning to attend a press conference downtown that actually started in a meeting early on with, with Congressman Al Green and Congressman John Culberson. As many of you know, we've been working on the 98 rail project for over 20 years. And it was voted on in 2003 by the voters, but Metro has continued to ignore what the voters voted on it in 2003, and have continued to ignore the 98 rail project. I was in Washington DC last week, and I was in Congressman Culberson's office, and he told me that what he was gonna do this morning, and he thought that I would be very tickled about what he did, and he did. This, what this letter did this morning in this press conference, and you probably see it tonight on the news if you get home in time, but Congressman Culberson chairs part of the appropriations committee for Metro gets its money. They can't do any projects without him. And he has continually said that he was opposed to the Post Oak-Westheimer Line. And this morning, he brought that to a final head in this memorandum of understanding that these guys have before us, that Metro signed this morning that said they are no longer interested in the Post Oak-Westheimer Line, and that they are devoting their full attention to 98. Uh, and they've moved it to the front of the table, yes. And I would just tell you that in this, what it says is that they will continue to work on the North and Southeast Rail Lines, which were approved in 2003, as well as a 98 commuter rail line. But third, the thing, the thing I think it was most important that the congressman has done and is gonna do, and, and Congresswoman Jackson was there as well, giving her full support, is that one of the things that Metro has told us time and time again is they don't have the money to do the project. They needed matching funds to do this. Well, this morning, Congressman Culberson has made it very clear that he is going to allow the $587 million that Metro has used on other projects as a matching grant. That was from public funds. He's gonna free those projects up so that they can be used as matching grants for the 98 project, which is exactly what we needed Metro to do. They no longer have an excuse to say they don't have the funds to do this project. So as Congressman Culberson said this morning, the 98 rail is on its way. Is it gonna happen tomorrow? No. Is it gonna happen in the future? We're a lot closer to it today than where we were before today. And I personally wanna thank the congressman, both con, all three congresspeople, that they have, they have stayed with us steadfast. Congressman Green has been involved with this since, since he got on board. And I know that the Mayor Scarsella and I have been at it for over 20 years. And it's just, you know, when you see a bipartisan agreement like you saw today, crossing across the aisles, and the DNR are working together to make sure that a project in Fort Bend County, and Congressman Culberson does not represent any part of Fort Bend County, but he got on board with this because he believed early on that of all the rail projects that Metro was doing, this one made sense. This was the one that people wanted. And as he said from day one, why is Metro trying to shove something down the people's throat that never have wanted it, but yet the people in Fort Bend County, and especially Missouri City, who put it on a ballot and voted for it and have never gotten it? So I'm just proud of the fact that we finally have this MOU in hand, and I wanted council to have a copy of this. And it was a, it was a historic date for us and one that I'm very proud of. So thank you all.
Good job.
Yeah, it was good. All right, item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a consent agenda with exception to item C, which we will discuss.
Okay. All right, so A, B, D, E, F, G, and H. All those in favor, and Councilman Smith seconded, all those in favor. Motion carries. Then item 6C, to consider an ordinance adopting a pay structure and incentive and certification pay plan for the certified police personnel, providing an effective date and consider the ordinance on the second final reading. Yes, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Financial and Services Committee, which consists of Councilmember Floyd and Councilmember Smith, we spent a lot of time with staff in developing these recommendations. We also had discussions in regard to SARS in the future. We don't want to see ourselves get into a similar situation where we have to move to correct SARS as we have done so. Not only that, when we went into discussion, we want to make sure that we could provide for all the employees in the city, not just the police officers, even though that was a consideration that came to our attention first. And the reason I say that is because, and I love our police officers, but if the computers don't work, the police cars don't work. You know, if they have an accident on Highway 6, they're probably gonna need the fire department if it's big enough. And if it's a disaster, they're probably gonna need some public works people out there. So we're all interconnected together, and that's the point that we wanted to make. We would like to also recommend that the Financial and Services Committee continues to work, uh, on the SARS structures for the future. One of the things that we recommend that is included in the 2016 budget is a SARS study. That's kind of a first step. But we would also like to work and come back with council with some full recommendations to elevate this within our strategic plan while we can better take care of our employees in the future and have an actual plan of action going forward. You know, we have to get a lot of things done, but we up here don't do any of it. It's, it's all the employees, and so we need to raise the level of priority there. And I think that's kind of the consensus of the committee. And we recommend approving this increase with, not only does it include SARS, but the committee took the time to look at other areas that was affected, such as some of the incentive or certificate pay, which has also been increased in this recommendation.
Within the budget. Within the budget.
And we worked very hard to have something for everybody without a tax increase. And that was very important, that we could do that.
I think it's a great idea. So, that's your motion.
That's my motion.
Your second?
Second.
There's our discussion. Not, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Very good. Item seven, public hearings. There are no zoning public hearings, there are no related actions. Item eight are appointments. Item 8A is consider appointing a city attorney. Your motion?
I move to adopt that we appoint E. Joyce, and I can't say her last name. She's not to see it from me.
Yamu.
Say it again?
Yamu.
That's what I said.
We're next going to change her last name to Smith.
Or Johnson.
Yeah, you know, Jones.
Is E. Joyce here?
Yeah, she's here.
Come on, E. Joyce. Stand up. Come up here. Was there a second?
Second.
Very good. By the way, Mary Ann did not want any farewell, you know, and all that good stuff, although we wanted to do that stuff for her. Let me just say that we aren't running her off. It's not that she can't get along with Jerry and I. Like we're accused of a lot of other things. You know, she has another life and she's got, she's got plans to travel. She's retiring. Whether she goes back into practice at a later date, that's going to be her choice. But I think this is something that Caroline has talked about a long time and, and I, you know, I applaud her for doing it. Having four of us up here who are retired, you know, at some point in time, you have to make that decision. It's the smartest decision we ever made. I think it will be for you. You've got a son and you've got a life ahead of you. And I just want to personally say thank you for the years of service that you've given the city. You've kept most of us out of jail. All of us right now, but, you know, and let me just say, E. Joyce, that's your responsibility now. When you tell us to shut up, we need to shut up and keep us out of jail, but that's what the city attorney does. But, you know, the city attorney also has a very difficult job of making decisions sometimes that are not easy. They're decisions that affect you as citizens, especially in lawsuits and things like that. And Caroline, you know, the problem with Caroline is that she's a workaholic. There were many times when her light was on in her office, long past when it should have been. If we measured her salary on an hourly basis, it'd be less than what McDonald's pays their people today. But she's a very dedicated person and, and I will just say that when we started looking at a replacement for her, the most important thing for us was that Caroline said that E. Joyce was her choice to take her place. And I think that says a whole lot of you, E. Joyce, but I think it says even more of you, Caroline. So, thank you for those years of service and, you know, you don't have to say anything, but I think I'll let everybody else say what they want to say about it.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo some of that, but Caroline, yeah, I want to commend you because what you've done is you've mentored, you know, folks within your department. You brought them along to the point that whenever you made your decision to retire, we had a, you know, a real qualified and capable replacement for you. It was all done within-house and I think that's one of the things that I'm, that I like to see is that we're mentoring and when we're bringing folks who, you know, are at different levels than bringing them up to the point where, you know, they can attain some of the goals that, that, you know, they're trying to achieve. So, I commend you for bringing E. Joyce along and, and having a foresight to know that she was the type of person that really could, could fill your shoes. And I know those will be big shoes, but I think she's capable and up to the job. So, thank you.
I, I think the citizen needs to know that this is a very refreshing appointment. And, and, and in this sense that we didn't have to look outside for anybody. In fact, we had two very well-qualified people in-house. In fact, we told the interim city manager, let them know that we're only talking to two people. And I think we have began to develop that within our city. And this goes back to my previous discussion about the Saris and rewarding, I had to get that in, and rewarding our employees. Because if we're going to produce people to step up, we also have to make sure that we pay them and retain them. And that goes across the board. I have worked with E. Joyce the whole five years. I think she's excellent. She comes from a background, I think you know something about Senator Rodney Ellis in your background a little bit, which, which is helpful. And, and, but it's really nice to know that we have people that can step up and that we recognize it and reward our. We did the same thing with Maria, our city secretary. She stepped up. And hopefully, wherever there's an opportunity for that to happen, we should be looking for that. And thank you, E. Joyce. And I'm going to learn how to say your last name, if it kills me.
Pronounce it phonetically for me. Chris?
It's been great getting to know you over the past year. Whenever I had questions, you were always available. Enjoy yourself. I know these guys have worked you, but job well done. No, it wasn't me. Congratulations.
Non?
Caroline, you know, if I followed Jerry and the mayor, there's nothing more left to say, but.
Well, we tried.
But it was, it's been great working with you. You've, your counseling has been exceptional. And I like to say that personally, coming from me. And not only did you manage your job in exemplary manner, but you also had a good succession plan with, with E. Joyce and we really appreciate that.
Yolanda, I'm going to skip you, Anthony.
I have something to say.
You do?
I do.
Oh, okay, we'll say it.
So, as a resident.
Oh, okay.
As a resident.
A hardboard person.
You also impacted the residents. And my daughters absolutely love watching you on TV because you're the fastest reader they know.
Yeah.
She's very good. Thank you for all your service. I know you made a big impact, not only up here, but in the community.
Well, Caroline, I've worked with you as a staff person at the city now, as a council member. You've always been very thorough and I want to thank you and wish you the best on your endeavors and stop working so hard. And congratulations, E. Joyce.
And I do come to Austin.
I'll look for you.
You will.
I've got some cousins there.
Very good. And her last day is?
May 29.
It's May 29 and the appointment of the new city attorney is effective at 5:00 PM that day.
4:59.
So, hold on, Joyce, you know, get it ready, you know? Starting all that stuff, but congratulations to you, Joyce. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. There was a motion by Councilman White and a second by Councilman Preston. All those in favor? Motion carries. All righty, Joyce. Item 8B is consider appointing directors to the Board of Directors of the Sienna Plantation Management District. Who has that? Do we have that?
Oh, I can go ahead and introduce this.
Yeah.
As the city council does have the authority and responsibility of appointing these boards of directors. Staff's recommendation at this time is to appoint Deborah Marcel as Director of Position One, Linda C. Bell as Director of Position Two, and Cody Radley as Director of Position Three.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman White made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right. 9A is consider electing a mayor pro temp. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we elect Don Smith, mayor pro temp.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then a motion and a second? Are there any other nominations?
Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilwoman Yolanda Ford, mayor pro temp.
Is there a second to that nomination? Saying no second, that nomination fails, so the motion was to nominate Councilman Smith as the mayor pro temp. Motion by Councilman White, second by Councilman Emery. All those.
Mayor, my motion is in keeping with the discussion that we had and agreement that we had last year that we would rotate the position. And I personally removed myself from the position, being the longest-tinged person up here. That needed to be a long time before I become mayor pro temp.
Yes, you did. Any other comments? Not, we'll vote all those in favor. I'll oppose. You can vote. You can vote.
I'm good.
Huh? You abstain?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion carries. All right. Any comments for the new mayor pro temp?
Not at this point, if you don't mind. I like to thank, I'd like to thank you and hopefully that, that we will make sure we carry on the high level of respect for the position. And hopefully I never have to be, preside over this meeting, wishing you good health and, you know, so, but, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you. All right, item 9B. I know we've got some people here from Quail Valley Fund and we want to consider authorizing staff to facilitate the dedication of certain public improvement by the Quail Valley Fund for McNaughton Park.
Thank you very much.
Come on, guys. Come up.
Andrew Hayes with the Quail Valley Fund.
Absolutely.
Inform you all.
Got the board here. Yeah, come on, board.
I actually think our entire board.
Our management, yeah, our management staffs here.
Minus one person who's struggling for business.
Tony, come on up.
Yeah, she is.
We're coming before you guys tonight to present a recommendation we'd like to offer to build a playground and other facilities at the McNaughton Park.
Oh, excuse me just a minute. We have to kind of do this. You have to tell us who you are.
I'm sorry.
You need to tell us who you are and where you live for the record.
My name's Andrew Hayes. I live at 3306 Golden T Court.
And you're with?
I'm with the Quail Valley Fund. Do you need everyone or just me?
Unless they talk. Unless they talk.
We're coming before you guys tonight. We, the Quail Valley Fund, the HOA for Quail Valley proper, would like to build out some amenities at McNaughton Park. We've been in conversations with city staff for quite some time, with Randy, Scott, Sharon, Larry, when he was here. They've been working closely with us to make sure this is done to city standards. It's something that we know the city doesn't have the resources for. Fortunately, we do have the resources for a project like this. We in turn don't have the resources for long-term maintenance and upkeep of something like this where, as the city does. So, the fund has a long history of partnering with the city on projects. The bridge on Eldorado is one of them and hopefully future bridges in Quail Valley. Those nice bridges, I think Charlie's going to say some things about them. I know a lot of times throughout the city, there's a misconception that the city is responsible for those. That's actually not the case, just as the city is hopefully not going to be responsible for this park. We do have the resources, like I said, to, to make our neighborhood nice, to beautify our neighborhood, and we like to work with you guys to do that. And this is another one of those situations. What we're proposing is, is there anyone up here who's not familiar with McNaughton Park? It's the old executive course. It's at the end of Hampton, at the intersection of Hampton and East Creek Club. It's a dilapidated restroom facility that used to be a halfway house that's in very poor repair. Randy's worked miracles with the city, other city departments to keep it where it is, but it's, it's embarrassing to be honest with you. So, we'd like to go in and tear that down, rebuild the bathroom facilities and build a state-of-the-art playground and a fitness trail. This is the first of hopefully many phases that we can do at this park as we have the resources and hopefully if this is successful, we can continue it on. We, like I said, have already been working with Public Works, so Sharon. Sharon has had the in-house engineers. Is that the right, right way to term them?
No, it's good.
Okay. Kind of take the, the master plan, which was developed back in 2010 for this park. This is from citizen input. That master plan was developed through, through citizen input. We're trying to keep with it as much as possible. And basically, as you can see, the park would go, the playground would go right next to the restroom facilities. The restroom facilities would be rebuilt in the same place. Parking, same place, hoping maybe get a little bigger. But that's what we're proposing to do. We've already gone before the Parks Board and they've given us a positive recommendation for you guys.
Well, I think it's important for you to tell them how much money this is, you know?
It's not insignificant. We don't have a total price tag on it yet, but it will be upwards of a half a million dollars that the Quail Valley Fund will be completely responsible for. It, on the front end, as far as construction, there will be no burden on the city. Obviously, the maintenance going forward will be, but we're going into this with, like I said, close cooperation with Parks Department. Randy and I, as recently as five minutes ago, out there in the lobby, had discussions about ways that we can do this, innovative, creative ways, not just going through and throwing up, you know, concrete bathrooms and, you know, a schoolhouse play structure. It's a state-of-the-art playground that we're looking to build. It won't have rubber mulch, which is a nightmare for the Parks Department to, to maintain. I've served on the Parks Board, so I've heard all the stories about Randy and how they have to maintain these parks. So, we're going into it, working closely with them, trying to minimize the burden it will have on them as far as maintenance.
And it is a public park?
It's a public park. McNaughton Park is a public park and will continue to be a public park. We're not building any fences or walls or gates or anything like that. We're not going to have any guards out there. It's a public park that happens to be in the heart of our neighborhood and that's why we want to do this. It's why we're not doing this elsewhere in the city, because to be quite honest with you, that's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is our neighborhood and this is something that will benefit our residents.
Awesome. Charlie?
Charlie. Can we talk a little bit about the concept, the equipment that you're going to have there and how it's friendly to?
Sure.
Not only the physically?
So, we don't have, like I said, a final design. We're still working with the various vendors on it, but this is, it's a conceptual drawing of what we're looking for. Like you can see, it's, it's not the run-of-the-mill playground. It's, it's not something that the city currently has in any of its parks and it's likely not something that the city ever would have in one of its parks, mainly due to the price tag.
Right.
It is ADA compatible. You can't see in the small picture there, but it's wheelchair accessible, not just ADA compatible in terms of a handicapped child being able to walk on it. You can actually take a wheelchair on it. It's environmentally friendly. It's, one of the important things for us is that this whole project keeps in mind where it is, which is an older established neighborhood, trees, homes very nearby. So, we're looking to go in, you know, low-impact, but be able to serve as many people as we can. So, it's, it's a pretty impressive structure. And then as far as the fitness trail goes, it's similar to what was done at, is it Buffalo Run Park?
Hunter's Glen Park.
Hunter's Glen Park.
And along the first column trail.
Right.
It's, there's existing trails within this park that we would probably mold the fitness trail around. It's the outdoor, you know, body weight is your own, is what you're lifting type of equipment that would go out there.
Thank you.
Charlie? Charlie's president of the fund.
Charlie, 2818 Lakeview, Missouri City. I'm here to represent citizens of Quail Valley as the president of the Quail Valley Fund. And all I can say is don't let this guy retire. He's the best. You've got to wait till we finish, Randy. The thing that brought this about, and some of you may know the history of Quail Valley and some of you may not, but we have no amenities in Quail Valley. All of the amenities that were in Quail Valley were owned by the Quail Valley Country Club and Jim McNaughton. And as the country club changed hands, those amenities disappeared. The land was sold off by the owners and we ended up. The land was sold off by the owners and we ended up with nothing. We have no swimming pools. We have nothing for our citizens. Moving forward, as we see younger families moving into Quail Valley, uh, it's, it's exciting for us, us older ones that have been there a while, Alan, Floyd, Jerry, and myself. Uh, we have a lot of younger families moving in and we have had a number of inquiries from the younger families saying, "Well, there's nothing out here." And they're right. And we have been working tirelessly for eight to ten years trying to acquire land, which is, there isn't any, well, there is some, but it's not acquirable at this point. We, we tried. So our only, our only other option was to work with the city to put something like this in. And as Drew said, this is what we hope to be the beginning of a number of projects that we can do on city property that's open to the public, uh, and, and get people in our, in our community. We want people to come in our community and see our community because we are, and, I mean, there's no doubt, we're the best community in Missouri City. Just wish y'all'd come over and see us. So come on over and visit when we get this thing built. I'm sure we'll have some big, you know, grand poopa deal when we get it ready, but we, we want to help the city in any way we can. We always have and we always will. And, uh, it started out when we, uh, gave the city money to mow the golf course before they truly owned it.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars.
How much?
Hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Don't remind me. I've heard that before.
Just a little bit.
People, people didn't understand that, but it's our community and our community is part of this city and, and we want to do anything we can to help. So, uh, like Drew said, as these bridges are redone, we want to beautify them, just like we did the one on Eldorado. Uh, we didn't want just a concrete bridge there. We wanted something that, that invited people into our community. And we hope to do that as we go along. So thank you for considering this. Uh, it's a big investment for us. We just don't have a half a million dollars laying around very often, but, uh, it's, it's a major, major contribution on our part and, uh, we hope, uh, this, the council will, uh, embrace it and the, uh, citizens will use it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything? Guys, I mean, these guys right here are responsible for not only that bridge, but all of the esplanades throughout the subdivision, the entrances, the fountains that are at the front of the subdivisions and all that stuff, and they just do an outstanding job. I just wish that we had more of our subdivisions that were able to do what you're doing and, and a lot of them want to do it, they just don't have the income to do it, but, you know, a lot of them are doing a lot of things. Don did a lot of things in his subdivision by rebuilding fences and they, and, you know, the Blue Ridge Mud helped build that water park over there in his district and Yolanda's district. So it takes a lot of partnerships and it's just important to have people like you all who feel that strongly about doing something. You could have said no very easily and said, "We don't have the land and get on down the road," but, but what you said, I think, is going to be the future of Missouri City, the entire city, not just Quail Valley. So I personally want to thank you for doing it and I, and I look forward to the, to this growing and, and using that entire track as what our master plan was from day one and why part of what we did, what we did as a council in taking on that golf course and the four hundred acres of parkland that we knew was so valuable. We'll develop the first tee piece and we're working on that next, uh, but thank you for what you all are doing.
I make a motion.
A second.
Consider authorizing the staff to facilitate the dedication of this property.
All right. Motion by Councilman Emery.
Oh.
Parks Board, maybe?
That's right. That's right.
As a, uh, a resident of Quail Valley, and they're spending my money too, uh, I want to personally thank our board and for working with the city. So many times, uh, we get criticized for reaching out, but I think, uh, when we have individuals and groups within our community that, uh, uh, actively advancing themselves to improve the city and knowing that the improvements that they're make, making are for the benefit of the entire city, and I think that's the piece that we cannot fail to forget. Uh, this partnership with this city property belongs to everybody in the city and I am proud to live in a neighborhood that would just do that. That makes me proud all by myself.
Anyone else? Man, this is great. By the way, this motion is to authorize staff to, um, instead of, I guess, putting together the, the, um, agreement and everything, so how quickly can that be done so that these people can get started?
We, we have a form document ready to go on that, so the, the primary challenge is, of course, just confirming that it's built to city standards and, and conformance with all the city regulations.
We'll be doing that as they go along.
Right, right.
So they're ready to start construction tomorrow, right?
We've taken, um, uh, we prepared documentation similar to this before.
I'm just trying to get you to that point, Charlie. It's tomorrow, you know? It's ready. I want to make sure y'all are ready.
Get a good...
If we're ready.
Pursuant to our ordinances, any property, of course, built on city property is city property. The city does not have to take any affirmative steps, uh, to make that city property, but, but in order to, uh, facilitate, uh, for the organization, we can prepare paperwork that accepts that dedication.
Yeah. Yeah.
In, in, in common language, we can kind of do this right now and then let the paperwork catch up with it. Is that what you...
Well, upon, upon the city staff's confirmation that it's built to city standards, we can sign documentation.
Staff will take all necessary actions to make this happen.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Carol.
All right. Any other comments? If not, there was a motion by Councilman Emery and a second by Councilman Marolis. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine C is to consider authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Region Eight Education Service Center in the city of Missouri City for cooperative purchasing services. Yes, sir, Michael.
All right, counsel. This is a, a new purchasing agreement that staff is looking to, uh, implement. Uh, it's called the Tips USA Cooperative Agreement, and basically it's just another agreement for us to purchase, uh, similar items that we've been purchasing for the last several years, um, such as office supplies, furniture, computer equipment, fuel, water, uh, water treatment chemicals, landscape materials. There is no obligation to use this cooperative, cooperative agreement and other cities that use it include Victoria, Texas City, Pasadena, Port Arthur, Fort Worth, and Dallas, uh, and it's similar to the, uh, what we currently have right now, which is the U.S., uh, U.S. Communities as well as TCBN, which is a Texas Co-op Purchasing Network. So it just expands our network.
It's a cooperative that schools use currently.
Right. And also I wanted to mention our, here's our new purchasing manager, Alan Phillips.
Yay.
Uh, he, he's, he's, uh, worked, uh, thirty-four years in purchasing and he's, uh, we stole him from League City, so...
That's all right.
Michael's the, the one who's got the biggest smile because now he's getting rid of that purchasing guy.
Yeah, that's right. It's like, ah, no longer have purchasing. Is there a motion?
So move.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Smith made the second. There's no discussion. We'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Item nine D is consider authorizing a city attorney or her designate to initiate civil proceedings for the enforcement of city ordinance one-two-six-four, at one-two-six-four-six Grove Park Drive. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Ford made the mo, uh, made the second. I think we're very familiar with it. Has it been a motion and a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. And the second one is E is consider authorizing a city attorney or her designate to initiate civil, for the, to initiate civil...
Proceedings.
Yeah, uh-huh, for the enforcement of city ordinance twenty, at twenty-seven oh three Spring Place Drive. Is there a motion?
So move.
Counselman Emery made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item, uh, nine F is consider authorizing a city attorney or her designate to initiate civil proceedings for the enforcement of city ordinance twenty-two-eleven Glen Lakes Drive.
So move.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir. Good pictures.
And I'm going to just make a comment that all three of these are pieces of property that have code violations, serious code violations, that have ignored not only us, they've ignored the HOAs, and we're now going to District Court to have them remedied, so. People from Quail Valley are very familiar with, uh, twenty-two-eleven Glen Lakes, so anyway, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine G is consider authorizing acceptance of a general warranty deed from Toll-GTIS Property Owner LLC for the parkland for the Sienna South Development and acceptance of an access easement related thereto. Is there a motion?
So move.
Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Emery made the second. Is there a discussion? We take, we take land anytime we can get it. There's no discussion. We'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries.
Good job, Gary.
Yeah.
Ready to go.
Yeah. Thanks for sticking around. Nine, nine A is to consider authorizing acceptance of a access easement from Sienna Plantation Levy Improvement District for access to the parkland for the Sienna South Development. Is there a motion?
So move.
Got to get there. Emery made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Wyatt made the motion, uh, made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. There are no ordinances, uh, resolutions. Eleven A.
A resolution of the City Council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Texas Association of Community Colleges Administrator of the Texas Community College Cooperative Purchasing Network, providing for the participation of the city of Missouri City in a cooperative purchasing program for goods and services and designating the city manager as the official representative of the city of Missouri City, Texas, relating to the program.
If we get these things cheaper, why not? Is there a motion?
So move.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Eleven B.
A resolution of the City Council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of the grant application for the victim coordinator and liaison grant to the Office of the Attorney General of Texas and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Smith made the second. Is there a discussion? Not will vote all those in favor. Motion carries.
Good job.
Good money.
Go get it.
And let me just say that, uh, as you all are aware, uh, the chief and I were in Washington, DC this past week. As I said, we were on our hands and knees before the Justice Department begging for grants, uh, to replace some of the stuff, just like what this grant is right here, but, you know, we were at the Justice Department, uh, to find out what grants were available to us, when they were going to be available to us, and, uh, the cops grants coming up. We also found out that there's some grants that we were not aware of before that the Justice Department told us that they felt very strongly that we had a good, uh, uh, chance of getting some money for, that we didn't really think that much about it and it's under the gang intervention program and it's for mentoring, uh, and our, our police officers program that, you know, I choose to follow the rules, their consequences program, uh, the first tee program, uh, and their police basketball league. All those things kind of fit within what the Justice Department is looking at today under their mentoring program, so we're gonna, we're gonna look at that application. Congressman Culberson is not real big on sending letters of support for services. He said, "I, in appropriations, I want you to own things. I want you to be able to see them," so we said, "Like body cameras." He goes, "Yeah, like body cameras." So we're gonna make an application for that, uh, and hopefully he will support us there, but, um, I will just say that, and that the chief were here, he's at, in school this week, it is so impressive to this group, to the Justice Department and everyone that we were there, our congressional delegation and all that, that we would take the time to come up and tell them about Missouri City and tell them what our police department is doing with the money that they have given us in the past. We talked about, uh, officers who are multilingual. There's some provision, there's some, there are some, uh, grants that are out there for multilingual. They were very interested in the fact that there are eleven countries represented in Missouri City, uh, and that all of these languages are here and that unless we've hired the young Vietnamese officer, we don't have anybody that speaks anything except English and Spanish. So we know that we've got language, you know, uh, issues here with other citizens. We're looking at that. Uh, we're looking at the crime victims, uh, domestic violence. There's just a number deal. And of course, all of them tell you that it's all about money and that's why you've got to get our legislators and our congressmen, but, uh, we were there for, uh, and we made visits with, uh, nearly all of them that were there, so it was a very productive visit and now the burden falls on you guys to make the applications. But I will tell you, our lobbyist in Washington, DC is money well-spent, guys, because he knows the people and he's put us on track with, uh, those grants and things that we would not know about before, so we talk about that from time to time, but he was there every visit with us, at every department, knows those people, knows the staff people and, um, and it was just, you know, it was a great deal. So hopefully we're going to see some things out of it, but thank you for paying attention. Anyway, any other staff reports? Councilman, you have a, you have a report? Just glad to be here.
Are we at that point where the council reports?
You want to talk about the police memorial? You were there. You were at a HOA meeting. We did have a great police memorial and that was...
Beautiful.
Yeah, it was an awesome deal and I was, I was lucky enough to attend the National Police Memorial in Washington, DC and, and that was impressive, but ours is, ours is even more impressive because it's us that's here, so... Yes, sir. Is that your speech you have?
My, my apologies for not making it to the memorial. I think it's my first one that I haven't attended, but I certainly wanted to be there, but we, we were at a homeowners association meeting that was important for me to, to be there. I asked the mayor to allow me to speak at this moment rather than, um, speaking at the swearing-in ceremony because that's a joyous event and we are proud of the fact that we raised our hands and swore to uphold the laws of the state of Texas, the United States, and the city of Missouri City, so, uh, we, we wanted to not, um, bring that, that, uh, that, that honorable and joyous occasion down in it, but there are a few things I would like to say. Uh, I did mention that I want to thank my wife and I got to say it again because she have, and she endured me over the last three or four months, and I want to thank the Fort Bend Women Association for the reelection of Dawn Smith, Commissioner Prestig, Grady Prestig, Mayor Allen Owen, Councilman Jerry Wyatt, Floyd Emery, State Representative Ron Reynolds, and I got to mention to Ron, we, hopefully you'll get well real soon, and all the other volunteers of, and support folks. The words, um, that I repeated tonight and during my first swearing-in have stayed with me throughout the years, and I, I will faithfully execute the duties of the office, resounding words, and I pray often that my actions and thought processes will continue to uphold the commitment I swore to, for I truly believe that the citizens of Missouri City deserve total commitment and dedication to the well-being of this great city. So with this said, I, I recently ran for reelection for several reasons and I want to share that with the citizens of Missouri City. The first reason is to continue to process the progress of the revitalization and the redevelopment of Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor. I believe that everyone on this diocese is pleased to see improvement on Texas Parkway. We have ACC, who has bought property next to City Hall, and with that will come Commerce and other businesses. Local businesses are... Local businesses have committed resources to revitalize in Texas Parkway, building new structures and renovating existing ones. We have said from this very diocese that we encourage new businesses and the revitalization of existing businesses, and we've said it often, and that's happening now. I'm sure you have noticed businesses along Texas Parkway, and we say thank you to those business owners, both old and new, for the parts that they play. Thank you to Janice and Wayne Edwards for your barbecue establishment. Thank you for Lynn Goff for your real estate office. Thank you, Michael Rose Business Services. Thank you, Graces, for your Jamaican delicacies. Thank you, Ashley Furniture Store, and thank you, my optometrists, for keeping me from going blind, and I could go on. Things are changing on Texas Parkway. The second reason why I ran is as a veteran of the armed forces, I plan to continue working for a memorial, commemorating and celebrating the sacrifices made by unique American citizens. And thirdly, lately, outside interests with only self-serving motives have attempted to infest our city. I believe the citizens of Missouri City are too smart to allow infiltrators to corrupt our city government, especially Houston outcasts, when nationally, Missouri City is recognized as one of the best places to live in the United States, one of the safest places to live in the State of Texas. Our physical due diligence is noteworthy, and our staff is excellent and constantly sought out, sought after by other cities. Now, we may not always get it right the first time, but we bounce back with good results. Our intent is sincere, studded to the course, and we truly understand the need for change. This is exactly what we are doing, making positive change, making positive change. Ladies and gentlemen, we are making positive change. Thank you.
Well said. All right. We've got to go back into executive session, make sure that works. It leaves midnight.